All right, good evening. Welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District November 17th Board Meeting. I am AESD Board President Mark Lopez and I call this meeting to order at 5:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted in person and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Para español, puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera. Llame al 984-999-3974. Cuando se le pida, presione el pin: 536037569 y el símbolo pound. Any member of the public has an opportunity to address the board in person during the Agendized Public Comment Sessions or they may choose to submit their public comments in writing by 12:00 PM or have already submitted their comments by 12:00 PM today via an electronic form. Comments submitted in writing will be read during the appropriate Agendized Public Comment Session. Let's begin with our Board Roll Call vote. Or sorry, our Board Roll Call. Board Member Dr. Paolo Macalles.
Good evening everyone.
Board Member Ryan A. Relis.
Hello.
Board Member Juan G. Álvarez.
Present.
Board Clerk Jackie Philbeck.
Present.
And again, Board President Mark A. López. Item 1B are public speakers for closed session agenda items. There are no public speakers for closed session agenda items that were received as of 12:00 PM today or have there been any in-person submissions. Item 2 is our adjournment to closed session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion?
Second, Philbeck.
And there's a second. All right, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0, we will adjourn to closed session.
...
Good evening. Welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District November seventeenth Board Meeting. I'm AESD Board President Mark Lopez. I call this meeting to order at six thirty PM. This meeting is being conducted in person and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Spanish interpretation of the board meeting is available to attendees. Para español, puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera. Llame al nueve ocho cuatro nueve 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 tres nueve siete cuatro. Cuando se le pida, presione el pin cinco tres seis cero tres siete cinco siete nueve y el símbolo pound. Item three A, let's begin with the flag salute. Dr. Downing, if you please.
All right, please stand everyone. Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three B, our introductions and roll call. We'll begin with Dr. Paolo Magalas, board member.
Good evening, everyone.
Ryan A. Relis, board member.
Hello.
Juan G. Alvarez, board member.
Good evening.
Jackie Philbeck, our board clerk.
Hello, everyone.
And I'm Mark A. Lopez, board president. To my left is Dr. Christopher Downing, our superintendent.
Good evening, everyone.
Dr. Mary Grace, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services.
Hello.
I can't forget Dina Mellon, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Good evening.
And Jessie Chavaria, our Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services.
Good evening, everyone.
To my right is Tracy Golden, Senior Director of School Safety and Operations.
Good evening, everyone.
And Iris Camacho, our Senior Administrative Assistant. In the back of the boardroom are Mary Madrigal and Alina Abelaroque, our interpreters. Also Janice Cado, our Technology Support Technician. Brian Brooks, our Media Services Supervisor. And Darrell Hutchison, our Media Production Specialist. I guess the item three C, our Report of Close Session Actions Taken. There are none. Item three D, the Adoption of Our Agenda. Is there a motion? So moved, Relis. Thank you.
Second, Alvarez.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
So vote aye. Passes five zero. Item four, Special Order of Business, our school reopening update. Dr. Christopher Downing, our Superintendent, and Tracy Golden, our Senior Director of School Safety and Operations. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to give a really quick update on the COVID-19 safety that we have going on in the district. Okay, first of all, I did want to review that on November tenth, we had a town hall that featured a conversation between our superintendent, Dr. Downing, and Dr. Williamson from the Children's Hospital of Orange County. They talked about the COVID-19 vaccines for children, five through eleven, answered some questions that were submitted by the public. And it is available still on our website. You can click there. It will also be in the family letter this week if you missed it. Also on our website, they weren't able to answer all the questions that were submitted, so we have a list of all the questions with answers also on our website that were submitted for them. Also, on November thirteenth, we hosted some vaccination clinics, one at Key, one at Marshall, and one at Orange Grove. We were able to administer two hundred and seventy-two vaccinations. Eighty-six of them were boosters and a hundred and eighty-six of them were children five to eleven. So as a follow-up to that, we are also hosting a vaccination clinics at the same locations on December fourth, so that the children five to eleven can get their second shots, but boosters are also available for anyone who would like to get them. And then, just testing numbers for the last three weeks, the week of October twenty-fifth, we tested six hundred and thirty-four people, so students and staff. The week of November first was five hundred and eighty-six, and the week of November eighth, five hundred and seventy-seven. And that's our very quick update. If there's any questions, I'm happy to field those. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Golden. That takes, oh, this presentation will be posted on the district website, Board of Education page tomorrow. Item five, our News and Updates, five A, Parent Leadership Group Updates. There is one parent group update this evening from our DAC DILAC Vice Chair, Gilda Sanchez. Welcome.
Hello and good evening. My name is Gilda Sanchez. I'm the DILAC Vice President. And this is the Secretary.
Hello, good evening. My name is Rosa Barrios. I am Secretary of DILAC.
Our DILAC report, at the September meeting, we discussed strategies for continuing learning the school safety plan and funding to recover from the impact of COVID-19. In November, we received the reclassification results from Dr. Christopher Downing, mentioned implanting nine hours extended learning and additional staff is being sought. ASD will have the opportunity to work with other districts to obtain additional help. A training with parents was held on November second, where it was discussed by some parents that administration needs to have more communication and considers their points of view opinions. At yesterday's DILAC meeting, we received great information from Dr. Downing regards to vaccinate. He mentioned that currently the district is offering this vaccine at a different school. These vaccines are not mandatory and December four will be available. He also spoke about recognition, some students received for persistent pain and reflection. Sony also recognized for music teachers. Rhonda Robinson spoke about new form in regard to reclassification before the form suggests different programs. And now parents have the option to choose them. We will now have the option to enroll preschool students at an early age. Anaheim Union High School District informed us about current college regardless program and the difference of pathways that begin at junior high, so students can have the opportunity to explore different ones. CTE is offering equity with vocational training for those who don't need to attend college. They told us about the preparation of career regarding system. It should be known that we have many informational resources where we can obtain this. For example, college first, virtual event, sixth grade presentation, virtual college, campus tours, among many others. These are just some tools that give us necessary to support our children's education. Yes, I remember that we now have in-person meeting with the option of virtual attendance as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the update. That takes us to item five B, our Association Updates. There are no association updates this evening. Item five C, District News and Updates. There are district news and updates this evening. Dr. Mary Grace, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, will provide that. Welcome.
Thank you, Board President, Board Members, Cabinet, and a full house. Thank you all for being here tonight. You're gonna stay till the very end, right? Okay, I'll get on with my show. So, we had a all-staff learning day, professional learning day on November first, where our TOSA, Laura Hanson, presented information on implicit bias. And every employee, whether they were here at the district office, in the MNO department, at school sites, every department, every site met together for this important learning and conversation. And our TOSA for social studies also happens to be an artist, so she included an art activity where people, at the end of the presentation, were able to express their feelings and their learning through art. And this is an example, a proud teacher, I think at Stoddard, in her artwork. And there's some of the district office staff working on theirs. Our Jefferson friends, and this is kind of what we worked on, is empathy, patience, humility, and growth. It was a great day overall. After that, people had lunch together, obviously safely. And then, school sites had their professional learning and district departments did further follow-up. And as we had at the board meeting, we just have a compilation of pictures of our students who were recognized for their creative writing in fourth grade. And remember that you can go to the Anaheim Public Library or your own school library and check out one of these authors' work in the form of a zine. And we always like to thank our partners at the public library, Ms. Audrey Lujan, and also from Museo and Altroza, Carol Latham. We also are very excited, you know, we have this ongoing partnership with many of the music industry. And Save the Music has come through again this year with some music grants. This is kind of a list of items that were provided to each of the schools. And it was an introduction to music, so they typically provide instruments. Oftentimes, horns, trumpets, and this year that we're changing it up a bit to try to move to kind of a rock band or other types of instruments for our students to experience, guitars. This is an example of Jefferson. The music teacher is Dr. Stephen Pooh, and they received some ukuleles. And these are the kids proudly showing their new instruments. In addition, Lincoln, and the music teacher there is Destin Smith, they received, it looks like a percussion group of instruments. And Barton, music teacher Charmaine Murray and her students, as well as Gower. Gower Music received, looks like drum kits, in addition to the music teacher who received the guitar earlier that month. And then Madison, they too received the guitar package, and the music teacher is Tara Landy. And finally, music teacher Tara Landy, also at Franklin, and those are boom whackers. So overall, we just want to highlight and say thank you to our partners at Save the Music. And that's the news and updates for this board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grace. Any questions?
No questions, just comments. Really proud that our district is doing implicit bias training. I really wish that I had that early in my career. Oftentimes, we associate stereotypes with or without our conscious knowledge, right? That's just a norm within society, and to have our teachers trained in that. Well, actually, I do have a question. Was there any moments where, you know, maybe there was realization that, oh my gosh, I do that? Oh my, you know what I mean? Because we all do it. I would benefit from a training like that. I think everyone should take them. Were there moments where they were like, oh my gosh, I do that? Or like, not to call out particular teachers, but, you know, it's a powerful training, I know.
I think that the opportunity was there because if you dive into implicit bias correctly and with intent, you acknowledge that we all have some type of implicit bias.
Yes.
How we recognize it, or own it, or manage it.
Okay.
So I think a lot of the teachers, a lot of the comments, we got over like four hundred comments back from teachers that ranged from, you know, they really appreciated it, they appreciated the time to have the conversation and to learn about each other. I think if there's one big takeaway, it's that our staffs were able to learn about each other in a way that they never would have if we weren't having these types of conversations. Some of the questions were, I think the first question was, when did you first realize or become aware of race? And for, you know, everybody, that's just a different journey and a different conversation. And race impacts all of us differently. So I think that really, having that be the first question, had a lot of people share experiences and let their guards down. So I think it was very beneficial. And, you know, at this point in time where we are, I think it was a healthy conversation.
Nice. I love that we're having that conversation. Oftentimes, districts are scared to have those conversations. But these conversations are important and vital to bridge our communities together, to bridge families together, to bridge administration, teachers, all aspects and groups within our district. So I'm very proud that we did this. So kudos to the organizers of this, and very proud. Thank you. I think we should do more.
Thank you, Dr. Magalas. Any other board member comments or questions?
I have a question, to put you on the spot a little bit. Dr. Grace? Thank you for those comments, board member, Dr. Magalas. On a lighter note, explain a boom whacker to me, the sound it makes. I'm not as familiar with this. I think this picture is darling. Ms. Landy, I'm sure had to give instructions that they were not weapons. But what sound does it make? What does it do? Do you know what a boom whacker is? Does anybody know?
I'm sure that Mr. Mark Anderson is watching going, oh. I know what it sounds like.
That's what I'm curious about. What's it sound like?
It's a hollow instrument. It's like a percussion type instrument. Or if you've seen the kids using drumsticks on the Home Depot buckets, very similar in nature. The colors make different sounds.
Interesting.
Yes. But I will research that and get back to you.
So is it something that they wave, that they blow into, or that they...
They're kind of like the, you know, you're at the baseball, what are those called at the baseball game? Thunder sticks.
Thunder sticks. There you go. Okay, that describes it. We might have to have a...
But they make a nice sound.
Boom whacker presentation, so that's really interesting. Thank you.
Yes.
We couldn't get Dr. Grace to imitate the sound, despite your best efforts, Board Clerk Philbeck. So this is recorded. It will be memorialized forever on the internet, if you would, so. Good choice. All right, thank you, Dr. Grace.
Thank you.
That takes us to item six, which are public speakers. We have speakers on agenda and non-agenda items this evening. We have received four comments, have been received by members, submitted by members of the public. Our first speaker is Maritza Bermidas. Welcome. We'll set the timer for three minutes. Go ahead, Ms. Bermidas.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mark Lopez, and board members, and superintendent, and cabinet. My name is Maritza Bermidas. I am a parent here at AESD of three students and two former students. The reason I'm here today is because I am very upset at how our parent involvement has been running lately in our district. Having three kids at three different schools gives me a lens of how each school is differently run. Prior to three schools, I've had four schools, when my Frida was here at Anaheim Elementary. And I can tell you that my experience at Juarez Elementary was amazing. From the principal to the family engagement specialist, the faces, Ms. Leah Santos, just incredible. So having said that, you know, you kind of expect the same at other schools, right, as far as parent engagement? But it's not happening. And it's very sad that you, that myself, that's my job to be involved in my kid's school, to be there, to be involved in every committee that I can possibly be on, on PTA, anything that I can be, because I'm here to support my kids and the kids in my community as well. As far as the year goes, my school that I love right now is Jefferson. Dr. Song has been very inclusive. Dr. Song has been very inclusive, Mr. Ulises, everything. Sometimes the communication lacks from the district as far as workshops and events, stuff coming under the district. So that's out of their, their hands, right? Because if they don't have the information, how are they going to share it to the families? But as far as the other schools, Mr. Heiner from Olive has been very receptive and working hard in trying to build that parent engagement that has lacked for what I've, from talking to other parents for years. I just cannot believe how they can keep a person on staff, which is a faces. And I apologize if I'm saying names and I'm saying positions, but it has to be said, because there's change that needs to be done. We can't have employees on our payroll, serving our families and our students, that are actually not there to serve them, that are not being intentional to help. I won't even talk about man, because I'm really not, really not too much involved there. For whatever reason, the principal there maybe doesn't like me, but it's okay. I have great communication with the teacher there, and that's great. That's all that matters. He'll only be there one year, and that'll be fine. I don't have to deal with that school ever again. But it is sad for the parents that will have to be going there to the school, that are not getting those services, are not being inclusive. I mean, I don't know if you guys checked the numbers, if you guys get reports on family engagement or what's going on there, but you should be really looking at that. Because I am a, I am proof of what family engagement looks like here in Anaheim Elementary. Ms. Yoselia Yanavaro is sitting here in the audience. And I can say she's been a great mentor, and she started the PLI. It was going great. Unfortunately, the pandemic hit, and after that, even a little before that, it kind of started, you know, came to a standstill. But, you know, she developed, and whoever else, Ms. Amile, created this program. It's a great program. So please, let's build on it. Let's build this parent leadership, this being the parents included, and being part of making strong schools, not just one school or two schools. Let's replicate what's happening in certain schools in our district, so it could be straight across all the districts. So parents have an opportunity to help their kids thrive and succeed. Like I've seen my daughter go off to college, graduate, and go on getting her masters. And my other daughter be successful the same as she is right now at Sycamore. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bermidas. Our next public speaker will be Mariana Angelz, and we will make an accommodation for translation services. We'll go ahead and double the time for translation on the time limit. That being said, it's still a limit, not a goal. Welcome.
Hola, señor Darwin, señor Lopez, y demás miembros de este grupo.
Hi, good evening. Dr. Downing, Mr. Lopez, and all of our members here in this group today.
Mi nombre es Mariana Angelz, y soy líder comunitaria de Ponderosa, y pertenezco a Madres en Acción Ponderosa también.
My name is Mariana, and I am a parent, or community leader of Ponderosa, and part of the Madres en Acción of Ponderosa.
Hoy estoy aquí con un grupo de mamás.
And I'm here with a group of mothers.
De nuestra escuela ponderosa primaria.
Of our elementary school of Ponderosa.
Como parte de la comunidad, siempre hablo con personas que son mis vecinos.
As part of the community, I speak with people all the time in my community, my neighbors.
La mayoría de ellas son madres.
And the majority of them are mothers.
Y en este momento están preocupadas por la falta de comunicación que hay entre la escuela primaria y comunidad.
And at this time, they are very worried about the lack of communication between the school community and in the, yeah, in the area.
Yeah, good job, thank you. And también porque la mayoría de mis vecinos hablan español y la comunicación solamente les llega en inglés, aún cuando se han inscri, han pedido que les llegue en español.
And the majority of my neighbors who speak Spanish and have requested communications in Spanish are receiving all of the communications in English.
En la última reunión se habló mucho de los programas que la Escuela Primaria Ponderosa tenía antes de la llegada de la señorita Moreno.
At our last meeting, a lot was spoken about the programs that the Ponderosa Elementary School had before the arrival of Ms. Moreno.
Aprovecho este momento para felicitarla por su nuevo puesto en el trabajo.
And I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate her for this new position.
Y esperamos que sea exitosa en traer a las 24 escuelas que estarán bajo su mando.
And we hope that she is successful in bringing to the 24 schools that will be under her care.
Los programas que los padres realmente desean ver para el progreso de sus hijos.
The programs that parents wish to see for the advancement of their children.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ms. Griselda Marine, and again, we will set the same time as our last speaker.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Griselda Marine. Estoy aquí para hablar acerca de la educación de mis hijos.
Good evening. My name is Griselda Marine, and I am here to speak about my children's education.
Al igual que la señora Mariana, reafirmo que a veces la comunicación solo nos llega en inglés, y muchos de los papás con los que hemos hablado necesitan la información en español. También creo que aquí el trabajo de las feices es muy importante puesto que si no hay comunicación con feices, directores, maestros, la educación de nuestros hijos.
Yes, and like Ms. Mariana Angelz mentioned about receiving communications in English, many Spanish-speaking parents are not receiving those in their language, in Spanish. And we understand the importance of the faces' job in communicating with principals, teachers, etc.
El 75% de la comunidad es hispana, y creo que es muy importante que nuestra escuela, así como ahorita están buscando una directora, sea una persona que pueda hablar los dos idiomas, porque lo importante de aquí es que tanto directores como papás nos involucremos, nos sentamos en una misma plataforma para la educación de nuestros hijos.
And 75% of our population in our school is Hispanic. And we hope that during this time with the principal search that we are now going to go through, that principals and parents both get involved in being able to provide the support for our children.
He tenía la oportunidad de que tengo tres hijos y he tenido tres directores diferentes. Cada uno ha trabajado de diferente forma, en especial la señora Villegas hizo un excelente trabajo.
And I have had the opportunity with my three children to have three different principals. And I would just like to say that Ms. Villegas, at the time, did an excellent job.
Y quisiera que llegara alguien, no, con esa misma capacidad de que quiera que la comunidad estudiantil tenga lo mejor.
And we would like somebody like that, that would have that importance of the community, of the involvement with the students as well.
Y felicito a la señora Moreno por su nuevo cargo, y esperamos tener mucha oportunidad de trabajar para enviar el descargo de nuestros hijos.
And I'd like to take the opportunity also to thank, or to congratulate Ms. Moreno for her new position and hope that we can together provide the best for our students.
Gracias.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments. Our final public speaker is Guadalupe León. We'll go ahead and also set the timer when you're ready, Ms. León, and accommodating for translation services as well.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Guadalupe León. Pertenezco a los padres de Ponderosa.
Hi, good evening. My name is Guadalupe León, and I belong to the Ponderosa Parents Group.
Namás para felicitar a la señorita Moreno, que bien o mal la felicitamos. Esperamos que se organice más y se tiene ayuda de nosotros, que no, que nos pida ayuda, y estamos para servirle. Pertenezco también a diferentes, con ustedes, con el ICTO, PLI. Y me encanta estar aquí para saber aprendiendo más.
And we'd just like to, again, congratulate Ms. Moreno for her new position. And, you know, good or not, we hope that she continues to get organized and do her best. And if she needs help, we hope that she asks us. And I also belong to a lot of district activities such as PLI, and I'm constantly learning.
Tengo una pregunta más, más con los instrumentos, porque a las otras escuelas no les dieron más instrumentos, nada más ciertas escuelas tuvieron.
And I also have a question with regards to instruments. I'm wondering why certain schools received more instruments than others.
All right. Thank you very much for the comments. That takes us to item seven, Superintendent's Report and Public Hearings. Wanted to welcome our, welcome you to the Anaheim Elementary School District's public hearing to receive input from the public and board members regarding the adjustment of trustee area boundaries for the 2022 election. The purpose of today's public hearing is to provide the community with information regarding Education Code Section 5019.5's requirement to adjust trustee area boundaries after each federal census. If the trustee areas vary in population by 10% or more due to significant population growth in parts of the district, the current trustee areas vary more than 10% in population and must be adjusted. The district's demographer will provide us with a short PowerPoint presentation on the legal requirements for adjusting trustee area boundaries and the demographics of the school district when trustee areas vary by more than 10% in population. The public and board members may then provide some input. After the public hearing is completed, the board will consider the adoption of a resolution establishing the criteria for making adjustments to the current trustee areas. The district's demographer will utilize that criteria and provide the board with several maps reflecting the public input that the board has received. The board will then hold a public hearing to receive public input on the proposed maps. The board will then make a decision on which map to adopt. I'm now going to turn over the podium to our demographer to provide us with additional information provided by public input and board discussion. Sorry, followed by public input and board discussion. That's item 7A, and we have Angela Banuelos, Cooperative Strategies Adjustment, and Mr. Ron Winkart, Winkart from AALRR. Welcome both.
Thank you. So evening, members of the board, executive cabinet members, community members. Again, my name is Angela Banuelos. I'm from Cooperative Strategies. We're going to be providing an overview of the 2010 and 2020 census comparison and see how that came out. So while reviewing the 2010 data and the 2020 census data, we noticed that there was a 3.1% overall change within the district, and that is an overall growth of 6,051 inhabitants within the school district boundaries. So we noticed a significant growth in trustee area number four by a 15.4%. That's 6,101 inhabitants, just in that trustee area. Additionally, there was a decrease in trustee area number three, just about 576 inhabitants. So that brings the total variance to 18%, which is above the 10% variance allowable by the CVRA. So that brings the district out of compliance. No problem.
Okay, can we have someone, please, send trustee relus, okay, thank you.
Okay. So on this slide, we actually have the district demographics from the 2020 census data. Here we can see that the overall population, well, the largest protected class population is the Hispanic Latino population at a 63.8%, followed by the Asian population at 15.1%. Again, those are the two largest protected class voters within the district boundaries. However, if we look to the right, we see the 18 and over population. And then we notice that only 59.5% of the Hispanic Latino population is 18 and over. This is total population. It includes infants and just citizen, non-citizen, just anyone who lives within the district boundaries. And then, so we utilize the total population to better assess how to equally divide the inhabitants among each trustee area to provide like that nearly equal amount. And then that's when the 10% variance comes into play, because sometimes we can't get that, that exact number for each trustee area. Here, we provided a demographic slide of the largest protected class voters, which is, again, is a Hispanic Latino community. And this is provided by the citizen voting age population, also known as a CVAP. And this is provided by the American Community Survey, which is a subdivision of the Census Bureau. And so here we actually see that there's a huge discrepancy among the total population and the actual total CVAP, which are, so these are like the total eligible, eligible people to vote. So these are your actual voters. And then, so we utilize this information to help us identify communities of interest and not splitting those communities of interest or impairing protected class voters from electing a candidate of their choice. So on the color graduated chart, excuse me. So the darker the map, then, then the more dense that area is, and then the lighter the, the area, then the less density. And then here we have the current trustee areas. So as you can see, trustee area number one is the yellow, the green is trustee area two. The coral or pink color is trustee area three. The trustee area four is the blue, and trustee area five is that lilac purple color. And then here we have the breakdown of each trustee area. So the total census population is 202,659. And the ideal population size for each trustee area is 40,532. And then, again, the total variance right now with the current boundaries, voting boundaries, is 18%. So, so what does this mean moving forward? So what it means is we have to draw new boundaries. But it's, it's not the whole process, again, it's just minor adjustments. So we, we don't anticipate making huge adjustments to the district boundaries. Again, if we notice on the breakdown on slide one, that the largest growth was in trustee area four. And then, and then trustee area three and five had the least growth. So it would be kind of just balancing those populations, because ideally, that, that's the number one goal here, is balance the population. And the second goal is, you know, try to create the majority protected class districts within each trustee area. And, and the way to identify that is to look at the CVAP, which is the citizen voting age population. And anytime a protected class is above 50%, that would make it a majority protected class district. However, a plural district is when you look at the total population, and that is above 50% for a protected class. So, and then, so what are considerations in drawing the adjustments? Again, number one is total population. Second is complying with the Federal Voting Rights Act, no cracking or packing. And the third one is keeping the areas compact and contiguous as much as possible. And respecting communities of interest, again, going back to the CVAP data and what that helps us identify. And, and following man-made and natural geographic features as much as possible, such as main streets, freeways. And we, we try to, if possible, we try to respect incumbency, depending on where you currently live. And other local considerations that the board or the community members may have while we're doing this process. And that concludes our presentation. And if you have any questions on the process, or Ron and I are here to answer.
All right. Any questions, trustees?
So what is the timeline, more or less, then, in regards to getting this all established?
There's a statutory requirement under the Education Code that the process be completed by March 1st, 2022. If it's not completed by March 1st, 2022, then the Orange County Committee on School District Organization takes over and redraws the boundaries.
So what are the next steps now?
The next step is for the demographer to drop the maps, present those maps to you. Then you would review those maps. I think that's scheduled for the January meeting, if I remember correctly. And then we'll get your input. We'll get the public... And then we'll get your input, we'll get the public input, and then we'll come back in February and you'll decide on which map to adopt.
Trustee Filling and I were the only trustees that were on the board at the time when we went to district elections. And so they presented us with multiple maps and different scenarios and different variants, et cetera. I imagine that this is going to be similar because you use maps plural.
Yes, well, we're thinking around three scenarios to begin with, and then if you're not satisfied with any of those three scenarios, we can add more scenarios to that.
Thank you.
I mean, you answered the question that I had with regards to getting public input. That is the one thing that I definitely want. How does that look like? I'm over here.
The public, well, they have an opportunity today to get public input. This is kind of, you know, the beginning of the process. And then in January at the board meeting, we would encourage public input as well. The maps will be posted in advance of the January board meeting so that people will have an opportunity to see those maps and, you know, come to the board meeting and provide input. They can provide input in writing as well. So we want to try to encourage public input as much as possible.
And then the demographer is the one who gets that information and possibly adjusts things? Question mark?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I am on that committee for the redistricting, and I'm curious about the, I know it was the March 1st date. When we had a meeting last week, there was also a date that was up sooner because we're evaluating some other trustee maps. Is the March 1st date the date that also, it's not my election year, but does that meet the requirement for the registrar of voters? That March 1st date that the new maps are approved and incorporated into?
Well, for districts that are at large and that are moving into the trustee area system, as you did a few years back, they're not required to do it by March 1st. So it may, and they need Orange County Committee approval as part of that process. So that could go past March 1st. Typically, the registrar of voters wants it done by May or June so that they have time to implement it for the November 2022 election.
Okay, because that was a question that was bounced around quite a bit at the meeting was what was the actual drop dead date for that? And so...
We'd have to ask the registrar of voters.
That's what was going to happen.
Okay.
It was going to go and find out what exactly, but I'm sorry, it might get some more information. But thank you for all of the information that you've given. It was a great presentation. Thank you.
In the past, it's been around May or June.
May or June?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to add, so maybe if we could become cognizant of maybe some of the comments that were made by parents about being informed about things. So for example, if I wouldn't have come to this meeting today, I would never know that these maps are up if I was like a general parent out there, right? So how involved can a district get in actually sharing that information with families and parents? Because I know it's maybe tricky, maybe not, but even if we gave little blurbs with links in the communications that we send home all the time, because we send parent letters out all the time, from a cabinet perspective, what do you think can be done about doing that? Because, hey, parents, we're going to have a public forum on maps that affect the person that represents you. Can you come by if you want? Or click this link and send us your thoughts or provide us with that way? I think we can just think, we can think a little bit more from what we have done in the past about including things like that about public forums in our meetings, because typically the typical parent does not vet through the internet to get the agenda for our meetings to check to see what's going on, right? So if we can be proactive to do that, are we allowed to? And that's my next question.
Oh, sure, yes. We would encourage, you know, all means of communication. So depending on your community and what works best in your district, you could send out a newsletter, you could send it home with the kids, you know, you can post it on your website, you can send out emails, whatever works best, any form of communication is welcome.
We can also conduct some community meetings.
If I might add, because I believe Mr. Rellis is correct that he and I were the only ones that were on the board. Ryan, is that correct? It was just you and I? And I can't, there was a tremendous push for information, and the maps were presented. They were here at every board meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, there was just a tremendous amount of communication that went out and encouragement. And so I don't know what the easy answer is to that, except maybe that since we've already, you know, been there, done that, that more parents will be interested because I can tell you, there was, Ryan, was there about three community meetings or so? And no one came to at least two of them, and I think one or two people came to the one that was at Lincoln. It was also the night of the food pantry. So we really had a difficult time, and it wasn't for lack of trying. So I know we're all going to be aware of that, and hopefully this time around, like I said, you know, people are adjusted to the ideas of districting and how it works. So maybe we can get the larger participation, and you know, it is important. So I would encourage everyone to be ready for that. You know, we want you to come and see and have a part of this.
I think it's also about messaging and education, right? So if I see a flyer that says, "Come to this pre-districting map meeting," and I'm just like, okay, and then, no, I'm going to make dinner tonight for my family and hang out with them, right? Because that's what I do as a parent, or I have something else to do with my family. But if I understand that the effects of this map change, perhaps one of the board members that represents me will no longer represent me, and they can internalize that, then you might, we might get some other parents that will like, okay, wait, this is actually important, and I should go, right? Not to say that I'm expecting a flood of people, like, you know, but it's just thinking a little bit different about our messaging and how we educate our community so that they at least get this new opportunity to check something out that we're telling them, this is important, right? And so it's just about like what words you choose on the flyer, right? Because if it seems unimportant to me as a parent, I'm just going to look at the flyer and be like, eh, and then just like recycle, you know? And so we got to be aware about how we message and help our community get that information. So just want to say that.
I definitely agree with trustee Alvarez in the sense that it's about messaging and how we do it. I will confess, though, this is complex stuff, you know? And I look at that all the time, and I even myself get like kind of torn up with some of this data in regards to how it looks. And it's very complicated in the sense of like, well, let's move this boundary here. Okay, well, you can't just move that boundary there because of the fact that there's, you got to look at the demographics, you got to look at the clientele, you got to look at the breakdown of everything. So I mean, it's just about messaging and making sure that we're clear and articulate in regards to the different options that are available and why this is done the way it is, you know? I think that if we're looking at the data and we're looking at trustee area four, why is that such a large area now? Well, because we have the development of the Platinum Triangle, you know, and, you know, all these things and stuff. And these are fascinating things that I think that our community would like to hear more about as well, so.
All right. Thank you, trustees. I had just a couple of questions. One, we can have asked you about this before, and it sounds like there's probably no movement on this, but because there was a concern about the gathering of the census data, there were some delays, there was some concern about some communities not being counted because of communication primarily, but we don't anticipate any extension of this deadline. Every public agency is going through the same thing with the data collection and organization, right? So, and there's still no...
We have not heard anything about an extension. I have...
Not for school districts or community colleges.
Okay. And then my second question would be going along the lines of the public workshop because we are heading into the holidays. It's probably going to be a very light turnout for most people because they are with their families, they're making plans to do that, there's other things that are happening. I think it'd be helpful if we tried to have a public workshop. I don't know what the appetite for that would be. It might be worthwhile, but if it's not feasible and there's not a lot of response to it, I was wondering if we could possibly have some email. Parents, families are always on different schedules. It'd be impossible to have everybody in the same room at the same time, especially for an issue such as this. But if there's a Dropbox or an email or something at the school site where parents at their leisure could send a communication in, they don't have to wait till January because it might slip their mind in the next three months, two months, before they could submit some public comment while they're digesting what they want to say. So if we could set something up so they could just immediately submit that comment, and then our staff has time to synthesize all of that and gather all that data up as well, it would probably be helpful because again, not everybody's going to be able to make it to our January meeting either. So that's another concern, or they might forget to submit a public comment. So I would just ask that as a request as well.
This is along the same lines of what I was thinking too. If we filmed a presentation, if we filmed, actually filmed one of the presentations and defined it as best we could, I mean, it's better than nothing. If people couldn't go, we could play that, you know, on our website, offer schools, you know, and people could review it, and then if they wanted to even get their questions to us, there could even be a format where they could ask the questions and we could get back with them. I mean, rather than miss it, miss out completely, it's, I think it's always good that we have filmed presentations and that we can offer at least those to those at their leisure that they might want to view them. So it's kind of like what you're saying, is just get as much out there as constantly as we can.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on item 7A? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 7B, it is recommended the Board of Education declare a public hearing for adjustment of trustee area boundaries pursuant to Education Code Section 501 9.5. Comments may have been submitted in person or online via a form and must have been received today by 12:00 PM. Comments would have been read aloud by the board president or designee. After hearing no comments from the public, will now adjourn the hearing and vote on the following item, item 7C. It is recommended the Board of Education approve Resolution Number 2021 to 22/15, a resolution establishing criteria for consideration of adjusting trustee areas. Is there a motion?
So moved, Rellis.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, no other discussion. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes 5-0, takes us to item 7D, Educator Effectiveness Block Grant. Dr. Mary Grace, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, welcome back.
Thank you. Board President, Board, Audience Members, still here, that's awesome. So I'm here today to talk about yet again another amazing plan that we're putting together with some funds that we were given due to the recent closures because of the pandemic. This has to do with the Educator Effectiveness Grant. These are the items that we'll talk about, the funding, allowable uses, our next steps, and then the fiscal requirements. So the grant is funded for five years, starting this year, so this year and the four subsequent years, and it's $4,336,503. And here's a timeline that we're looking at. We'll take this year, since it's now October, and you'll approve the plan in December as a planning year to put together a comprehensive plan after we meet with and talk with various educational partners. And then we'll begin implementing and monitoring the plan in the subsequent four years. So the purpose of this grant is to provide funds that can be used to support the professional learning for our certificated teachers, administrators, and classified staff who work with students. The allowable uses are to provide coaching and mentoring, ensure that we have standards-aligned instruction with regard to developing literacy skills with our students in all content areas, including language arts, math, social studies, science, engineering, technology, also re-engaging our students after the 18 months we were at distance learning, strategies to implement social emotional learning, practices to create positive school climate, improve inclusive practices, ensure that we have an effective language acquisition program in place for our students. The majority of our students are emergent bilingual or multilingual learners, and we need to continue to focus on building their confidence again within the language that they are being instructed in, also professional learning networks and early childhood education. So here we are back to where we started. The plan will focus on culturally linguistically responsive staff. That is one of our LCAP goals, and every single plan that we have written and will continue to write starts with this as the goal for the district. There's a professional development plan that was developed by the Crest Committee. We currently have a certificated staff survey out regarding what their professional learning needs are. We will be working to develop one for our classified staff. We'll look at our student data and see what our trends are with our BESI and our Panorama data, which are student-reported and teacher observational data, as well as any academic trends that we're seeing. We're looking to propose additional PD days over the course of one and/or the next four years that will provide us that gift of time. One of the things that we're doing this year, we've carved out time for our teachers and administrators to meet twice a month in a PLC, and it's really helped them, especially coming back, being able to really talk about our kids' needs. And this will also let us really dive in and provide some targeted professional learning. We also are looking to provide classified institute either in the summer or the winter because most of our classified staff that work directly with students are on a 10- or 11-month calendar. So we'll try to work with them during the times that they're not directly working with students. And every good plan, you implement it, you monitor it, and you make adjustments. So just a quote about learning, intellectual growth should commence at birth and cease only at death, and that was Albert Einstein. So our next steps will be, we have a leadership team that is focused on curriculum instruction and assessment, and over the course of the pandemic, we also added a task force to this group that includes members from the AEA group, our teachers group, and I think currently there's like six teachers on it in meeting and talking with our AEA leadership group. We want to identify and expand that to include our dual-language teachers, our special ed teachers, make sure that we are getting input, and people at the table developing the plan have input from all of those different groups of educators. Again, we have staff surveys that were ones out right now for certificated staff, and then we'll have a classified survey after the winter break. We continue to meet and discuss this plan with our educational partners, AEA and CSEA. Our Ed Services Team meets once a trimester with each of the school sites in a district support team meeting. So through those meetings, we're collecting data about the needs of the schools, and then we'll bring the plan back for board approval on December 15th at our next board And there is a fiscal requirement for the plan. One of it is to provide a report of the detailed expenditures and information to the California Department of Ed, specifically any purchases that we made, and also the number of educators who receive professional development. So one of the things that we're also looking into is a system that we can have people sign up for training, or we can keep attendance records for all the various types of training that will be provided through this grant. And that's all I have for tonight. Are there any questions or suggestions?
Go ahead. Dr. Magalas, we'll start from the right.
I'm just curious, could the funds be used, I know it, it was more towards professional development, but could it possibly be used towards maybe sending some of our current teachers to maybe our BECOME, is it BECOME project, a program at Cal State Fullerton to maybe get their bilingual authorization?
Yes, it can. It specifically, I believe it was, under the language acquisition, it includes multi, you know, multilanguage learners as well as the professional learning networks. And I'm not going to steal anybody's thunder, but we're coming back in January to update you on our DLI program and we are already in conversations with our partners at Cal State Fullerton to support our current teachers who may have a BCLAD or bilingual authorization in Spanish. And then later look to providing a cohort of, a cohort where people who speak Spanish but don't have those authorizations can take the two classes, similarly to the two pathways we had in the project BECOME.
Wow, wonderful.
Those are in the works.
Thank you so much.
Please excuse me if I, if this is like a kind of, I guess, obvious question, but like, how would basically the success of this be measured?
That's a good question. For the state, it's records of what we did and who was impacted, but ultimately it would be, it would be both through qualitative data, are our students' outcomes improving? And quantitative data, do we have those relationships? Are we seeing less behaviors in the classrooms or non-positive interactions at school? And do our families feel welcome and culturally appreciated when they're on our campuses? So it would be soft and hard data.
Cool. I think it would be awesome to have the committees and whatnot that are being formulated to really formulate these kind of smart goals and measurable objectives that we can have so that when the four years are done or five years are done, we're just like, wow, that's great. We accomplished what we set forth, you know, and everybody benefited, so.
I like that idea, Trusty Rollis. The measurement now is based on, what are the different graphs? What are, what's that, what's that called now? The way in which districts and school sites are measured, we use a...
We have the dashboard.
Dashboard, yes. Okay, so maybe we could do a comparative between now and, and then. Great idea.
But we also want to, we did an activity with our LCAP recently that talks about, our dashboard data is kind of like satellite data. It's up here, it tells us something about a measure. Then there's map data. So you're getting closer to the school. It's that formative classroom assess, you know, those assessments teachers are doing on the spot and making adjustments. And then there is street data. And the street data is interviews, asking those hard questions and really digging in and listening and responding to, excuse me, responding to the feelings that people have, if you will. So I think the more we can have those opportunities, whether it's with our students, our educators and/or our parents, we'll, we'll be on a path to improvement and providing effective educational outcomes for all of our students.
Yeah, and I think that that honestly, like when looking at data, obviously today when we're talking about like just the district trustee areas and whatnot, that, that stresses me out because it's a lot, you know. I definitely appreciate that qualitative data. I think that that's fascinating and whatnot, and I think that that would be really beneficial for us to really make sure that we have some consistent qualitative data across, to really go through and, you know, really dig in there and hear, how do people feel about this? Like, how do they feel about this? What are they learning from this? How are they benefiting from this? Has there been a change? Has there been a different perception of the schools, et cetera? So yeah, I just really encourage the, the use of the qualitative data in this particular, you know, project.
Did you say street data? Is that what you said earlier, Dr. Grace?
Yes, there's actually a book. Look it up. It's a great book.
Okay, no, I agree. The street data, the streets don't lie, right? In our urban communities, we know it works, we, we know what doesn't work. We know if our kids are getting profiled, if they're not getting profiled. At the end of the day, like, people talk, right? So yeah, no, I agree with that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? None? All right. Thank you, Dr. Grace. Item seven E, our Health and Welfare Insurance Cost Update, brought to us by Jesse Chavaria, our Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services. Welcome.
Good evening, Board President Lopez, members of the Board, as well as the community. Tonight, I'm going to do a quick, short summary in terms of our health and welfare insurance cost. I think I wanted, we wanted to just kind of present a summary to our Board in regards to our insurance cost. So in our district, as of a couple of weeks ago, we have 1,769 of our employees who receive insurance. And they have the choice of two different plans. That's Kaiser and Blue Shield. But within Blue Shield, they can choose Blue Shield HMO, Blue Shield PPO, or Blue Shield Trio. And if you look at this pie chart, you can see the amount of participants in each of those options. So for Kaiser, we have 914 of our employees. About 52% of them choose Kaiser. Blue Shield HMO is about 11%, which is 200 employees. PPO, 142 employees, which is about 8%. And Trio is 513 employees, which is 29%. The table here gives you our current plant insurance caps based on the choice that employees make. So if you're an employee only, we have a cap as low as $6,411.72 if you choose the Kaiser plan, and as high as $9,101.52 if you choose the Blue Shield PPO. This is how much the district pays for that individual employee based on the choice they make. If they're an employee plus children, we have on the low side, Blue Shield Trio, which is $12,083.16. And then on the high end, PPO, $15,571.84. Once again, this is the, the cap, the contribution from our district. Employee plus spouse, as you can see there, Kaiser's our lowest at $13,792. And PPO is our highest at $19,119. And then if you choose the family plan, the lowest cost there is the Blue Shield, Blue Shield Trio at $18,377 with 76 cents. And the Blue Shield PPO is $25,180.68. So what, the total cost to the district in terms of the, those caps that we have and the choices that our employees are making is a total of $24,144,909. So comprised of Kaiser, which is, like I mentioned, 52% of our employees, which is $12,484,000. Our HMO is 2.6 million, our PPO, 2.1 million, and our Trio, 6.7 million. This pie chart has a little bit more information. So then we have what we contribute in terms of a, of a cap, but then, you know, insurances every year, they either go down or they go up. And usually if they go up, you know, we negotiate with our employees in terms of how much can the district pick up, if they can pick up any at all. So this year, for this year, we're picking up over the cap, over those numbers that I shared with you, $1.4 million. And, and the Kaiser plan is not costing us anything over the cap based on the rates that were provided for this year. Those 52% of our employees all can satisfy the cost of their insurance plan based on the cap that we provide. But those in Blue Shield, this is the contribution that we're making as a district to provide those options for them. As you can see, 513 of the Trio, which is 35.7% of the cost. So on average, if you did an average additional contribution by the district, it would be $1,029 for someone choosing the Trio plan. If they chose the HMO, it's an average participat, by the district of $1,136. And for those choosing the PPO plan, it's an average contribution by the district on top of the cap of $5,104. So the number that I do want you to pay attention to there at the bottom where it says 8% equals 50% of the cost. So if you go back to slide two where I was saying how, you know, each of the different groups and where they participate in terms of our options, 8% of our, the 1,700 or so employees participate in PPO and we're having to cover $724,000 over the current cap. So that's why right there, 8% equals 50% of the cost over our current cap. So this is just a quick summary in terms of the cost of our cap as well as the cost over the cap that we're kind of paying this year. Of course, like I mentioned, it changes year to year, but it gives you a good idea in terms of what we kind of have to pay each year. And I'll open it up to any questions you may have.
Questions? Trusty Rollis?
Okay, so if you can go back for me, please, and just go on slide five. On slide five, Kaiser's not listed here because of the fact that it's not costing us anything over the cap here in the district?
This year, yes. This year Kaiser came back with a rate of a minus 5%. So that meant anyone choosing whatever plan you chose, you were slightly under the cap and we could cover the entire cost just with the cap.
Okay, so we didn't have to go anything over the cap or anything? And that is the insurance that is used by 51.7%.
52% of our, yes.
52% of our employees, okay. So when I go back and look at this next slide, for the PPO, where we have 142, that's where you're getting the 8%. Is that correct?
Yeah, so if I go back to slide, this slide here, you know, the number of, of employees in each of the different plants, you can see there are 8% of our employees of the 1,769, which is 142, have chosen to be part of Blue Shield PPO.
So out of our 1,769 employees, we have a total of 142 participants who are basically contributing to district spending $724,850. Is that...
That's correct, yes. So typically, let's say, for example, I choose the, you know, and the numbers might be a little bit off, but let's say I choose the PPO family plan. The additional cost over the cap may be about $1,000, right, each month? But then the district picks up about 600 or so of that. So the employee does still pay some, pays about $400 or so, but it doesn't pay the 1,000 or so that it's needed in order to cover that plan. So if you're in a Kaiser plan, for example, family, right, at this point, because they had a negative 5%, we're not having to pay anything above the cap.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just had to get clarification for that because of the fact that that doesn't seem very fair or equitable that basically 142 employees are, I mean, is there a huge difference in regards to the PPO versus the Kaiser?
Let me go back to the, as you can see there, let's just take a look at the family plan there for Kaiser. So if, if you were an employee and have a family plan, you know, and it fits under the cap right now this year, we're paying $18,808 for you in that family plan. But if you look over to the right, just the cap itself, we have to pay $25,180. But the actual plan is costing us about $33,000. So we still have to come and pay above that $25,000, you know, about $6,000, $7,000 more.
Any other questions or comments?
I don't know. I just really encourage you to, or maybe our insurance committee to look at something that is going to be a little bit more fair for all the employees that we serve and mainly our district, just because of the fact that 142 employees are on the PPO and as a result, they're costing us in order to go over, to reach that cap, a, a large chunk of change. And I could just think of a lot of different ways that basically that money could be allocated than just to serve as 142 employees. So that's my personal opinion.
But I'm also looking at this, if I'm correctly looking at this, you got about 914 on the Kaiser side, but the other side is all Blue Shield, correct? It's just split into three. It's split into the HMO, PPO, and the Trio.
That's correct.
But it's all Blue Shield. So you got about half, close to half the district on Kaiser, and you got the other half on Blue Shield.
Blue Shield.
And then just within that Blue Shield, there's a couple of levels, but it's sort of 50/50 as far as the two.
In terms of participation, that is correct.
In terms of participation, it's almost 50/50.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Board members, we're prepared to continue to work on a plan that is equitable and fair across the Board. We will continue to work with our advisory committee, the insurance committee, but we will be bringing you a plan because this has been a longstanding issue with the district that's impacting our fiscal stability as we move forward with the rising costs of benefits.
Thank you. I know that I personally would appreciate that just because of the fact that when you're looking at it through the lens of the cost benefit analysis and everything, you know, it just seems like Trusty Philbeck said. I mean, it's evenly distributed, yet with the Kaiser plan, it's not costing us any money to basically go through with the cap. Yet when it comes to the whole issue of the Blue Shield, you're talking about with Blue Shield breaking that down, we're, we're paying over, you know, like a lot. And I just keep having to hark on the whole issue of the PPO part of it just because of how significant that is, you know. So I, I would appreciate the different plans being brought up that are definitely more equitable for all of our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavaria. Thank you, Dr. Downing. As a reminder, these, all three of these presentations will be posted on the district website, Board of Education page tomorrow. I think this is the item eight, our Consent Calendar. Items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are acted on by the Board in one motion. There's no discussion of these items unless a member of the Board, staff, or the public requests specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar. Are there any items to be pulled at this time? Trusty Magalas, Trusty Rollis, Trusty Alvarez, Board Clerk Philbeck? All right. It is recommended the Board of Education approve, ratify the following consent calendar items. Is there a motion?
So moved, Rollis.
Second, Philbeck.
Same motion and a second, being no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes five zero. Fix item nine, Action Calendar, nine A, Superintendent's Office. Item number one is recommended the Board of Education receive for the first reading revisions to the following Board policies and administrative regulations. Item A is Board Policy.
So moved, Rollis.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Philbeck.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on these items? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes five zero. Item nine A two, it is recommended the Board of Education receive the draft January 2022 to June 2023, Board meeting schedule for the first reading revisions. The final schedule will be... Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second, Alvarez.
All right. Any discussion on this item? There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
So vote aye, passes five zero. Item nine B, Educational Services, there are none. Item nine C, Selpa, there are no items. Item nine D, Human Resources. Item one, it is recommended the Board of Education receive the draft 2022 to 2023 and 2023 to 2024, School Calendars for the First Reading. The final calendar will be brought for approval at the December 15th, 2021 Board Meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved, Rollis.
So moved, Relis.
Thank you, is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second, Alvarez.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
So vote aye, passes five zero. Item nine D two, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the appointment of applicant number one-one-one-seven-two-zero-two-one dash zero-one to the position of Fiscal Services Supervisor, effective date to be determined. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please vote aye.
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 So vote aye, passes five zero. Ms. Mellon has an announcement for us?
Yes, thank you. Congratulations to Eduardo de la Cruz, who began his service with AESD in two thousand sixteen as a Human Resources Assistant. He currently serves as a Program Budget Analyst in Fiscal Services. Eduardo will begin his new position tomorrow. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Mellon, and congratulations. It is rec- uh, that takes the item nine D three, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the appointment of applicant number one-one-one-seven-two-zero-two-one dash zero-two to the position of Principal, effective date to be determined at a site to be determined. Is there a motion?
So moved, Relis.
Thank you, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second, Philbeck.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion on this item? Hearing none, uh, all in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes five zero, and Mrs. Mellon has another announcement for us.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations to Dr. Vidal Valdez, who has been selected as the new principal of Ponderosa Elementary School. Dr. Valdez is an assistant principal in Anaheim Union High School District and is currently serving as the interim principal at Anaheim High School. Dr. Valdez's official start date with AESD will be on January third. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Mellon, and congratulations again. Uh, item nine D four, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the salary increase for Range A on the Classified Monthly Salary Schedule effective January first, twenty-twenty-two. This increase is necessary to meet the new minimum wage requirements. Is there a motion?
So moved, Alvarez.
Second, Relis.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
So vote aye, passes five zero. Item nine D five, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the salary increase for the Child Care Provider Classification on the Provisional Salary Schedule effective January first, twenty-twenty-two. This is, increase is necessary to meet the net, uh, new minimum wage requirements. Is there a motion?
So moved, Philbeck.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
So vote aye, passes five zero. Item nine D six, it is recommended the Board of Education approve this, uh, certificated substitute teaching salary matrix as presented in exhibit nine D dot six, temporarily increasing the substitute teaching salary effective November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, Alvarez.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please vote aye.
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 So vote aye, passes five zero. Nine, item nine E, Administrative Services, there are no items. Item ten, Board Discussion, there are Board Member activities related to school business. We'll begin with Dr. McGallas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I did attend a fundraiser for one of the elementary schools in my trustee area, James Madison Elementary. They had their fundraiser at Panda Express, uh, which is a place I frequent and a lot of my former students, uh, work at, so it was nice to support them and of course, all the students at Madison. Um, I also visited, uh, one of our school sites. I was really curious, uh, with regards to the Anaheim Elementary Online Academy. And I just wanna give a huge thanks to Mrs., uh, Griegele, uh, one of the teachers at the site. She shared with me and I was so impressed the way she was able to utilize her Promethean boards, her iPads, like, she was rocking and rolling, she was multitasking. Uh, she was sharing me some of the breast practices that she does as an online educator and I, I just feel like, you know, this is, you know, a time that uh, that is really big with regards to trial and error, with regards to our, uh, I know a lot of districts and schools throughout the nation are playing with, uh, online academies and, uh, I just give kudos to all the teachers who are on the forefronts of, of this movement. Uh, I also wanna give a huge, a thank you to Principal Anna Kim for showing me around, uh, the area as well, so thank you so much uh, for showing me around Anaheim Online Academy. And speaking of online academies, I also did visit, uh, Trustee Ruelas, he did show me, uh, or sorry, Vice Principal uh, Ruelas, who did show me around at Cambridge Online Academy as well, so, uh, real, thank you so much and, uh, just really interesting, you know, the future of education. And that's all I have to report. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Dr. McGallas. Trustee Relis?
Thank you, President Lopez. Um, in all honesty, my board report is going to be very short, but, um, I just have basically, I'm keeping, I'm, I'm still chugging along when it comes to the whole issue of joining PTAs. Um, I have joined the PTAs of Patrick Henry, Starter Elementary, Luer Elementary, John Marshall Elementary, as well as Betsy Ross, so that brings me up to eighteen out of the twenty-four school sites. Um, besides that, I was not out and about in the community, uh, these last few weeks. Uh, it's been pretty challenging, um, work-wise as well as personal stuff. Um, but, um, just happy to be able to at least, uh, contribute to such an important organization like our PTSA. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Relis. Oh, you forgot your tour of CVA for Dr. McGallas. Uh, and Trustee Alvarez?
Thank you, Board President. See, on November tenth, I actually was in this room and I visited the in-person LCAP meeting. It was a hybrid meeting, which was uh, really well organized, and it was really high-tech looking, you know, I was, I felt like I was in some kind of futuristic forum where there were screens showing different people who were coming in virtually while we were holding an in-person, uh, kind of, uh, meeting that were kind of really well together, so, um, we had, uh, our interpreters in the back, kind of going back and forth with our, our families online and even the activities that we did were able to be facilitated within both of those groups. So I really do appreciate all of the effort. I'm sure there was uh, some, um, tech work behind the scenes that was involved to get that to happen, so I really do appreciate our techs that were involved in setting that up. Um, as always, LCAP's super inclusive, all of our educational partners are well-engaged and, um, speaking, and then we also had a, um, a session on, um, kind of diving into the, the critical, um, the crest, not the crest, the crest, uh, ideas within the session. Uh, I have other things on my mind right now, uh, but just the idea of being inclusive and having conversations, encouraging conversations amongst even, even the, uh, educational partners that was happening and it was really great to see. And then, that, earlier that, that day, I actually had attended a coffee with the counselors at Mann, virtually as well. And, uh, that was also held a virtual, uh, hybrid, in a hybrid model, which, uh, which is kinda interesting to see that the school sites were also starting in, to implement, implement that idea, so there was a few parents that showed up to, uh, Mann in a, in the room in, in person, and then the rest of us joined virtually and they were managing this, the forum, uh, the same way, kinda how they were doing the LCAP. And then, that, that same evening, I was able to, uh, watch, uh, the town hall that we had for COVID. I'm glad we were able to get, uh, an expert on there to answer questions, uh, help field, uh, the concerns that our parents might have, uh, for getting their children vaccinated. Um, and I really do appreciate, it was also translated, so I could, I could click a link and also watch the entire town hall in Spanish. Um, so that's appreciated that we were, were able to do that as well. Um, on the thirteenth, I made an appointment for my son Reese to go get a vaccine at, uh, Key Elementary School and took advantage of the fact that I could get a booster and so did my wife, so we, all, the three of us went together. Um, biggest relief I've had in a very long time to see him get that, that vaccine. Uh, very personal, very important to me, so I do really appreciate the partnerships that we've done here at the district to get this access to our families. It's there, uh, we were able to share the, the clinic and hopefully get, we, hopefully we can get more families to show up the second time. Um, 'cause I, I do believe they can come in for the, can the, can the, can students come in for the first shot in the second clinic? That, that was the question I had, I'm not sure, but I don't know if it's appropriate to ask. Gotcha. Got it.
Working with the state, oh, sorry, um, working with the state, yeah, exactly, um, working with the state and we're gonna have three more clinics um, at three other schools in January, so we'll have other opportunities coming up.
Great, um, so yeah, so, um, my son was super excited. You could tell that he had a lot of tension build up over the year, knowing that everyone else is doing this vaccine thing, right, and then he's going to school and how come I don't have a vaccine yet? And so, it was wearing on him, um, and he has a lot of support, and so I, I, I'm just, I know there's kids out there that are fearing things and I just hope that our parents take advantage of that. Of course, there's no mandate, right? It's just there if you want it and if you feel like it's the best choice for your family, but, um, I'm just really thankful to our district for everything that we do and offer for our families and it, it really is super easy to access. Um, it's just a matter of just knowing and connecting and, um, taking advantage of it, so, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Alvarez. Board Clerk Philbeck?
Uh, well, let's see, not a long report. Uh, I was, I was in Irvine for most of the past three weeks and so I wasn't able to get out to schools, but that's done now and I was able to make some of the meetings. As I said before during the, the presentation for the boundaries and trustee areas, I am on that county committee for the school district reorganization and we did have, uh, a meeting and to kind of set up the, what we're gonna be doing and how we're gonna be doing it, and it was interesting to find out that yes, we will be the ones adjusting the MAPS if they are not to falling into the order that they should, which as, I think, Mr. Relis, you said it's, it's challenging. So that's a little nerve-wracking, but, um, there's some great people on this committee, some people with a lot more knowledge and so I think our first meeting to actually start doing that, to evaluate trustee MAPS, is December tenth. So we're starting early and I'll keep you apprised of that, because I know it's gonna be challenging, but I think it's also gonna be very interesting, being a census year. Um, the YMCA meeting, I'll mention that, the executive board meeting, because we do need, if anybody's looking for employment, please contact the YMCA. We need Anaheim chiefs. We are low on our uh, employees for that. I mean, you know, there's, there are some waiting lists and we can get kids off those waiting lists if we can get more employees. So if you or if you know someone who's looking, hit us up, because we definitely have the opportunities there. Um, the Orange County School Board Association meeting, actually, we had today, and I'll just mention it because it's, um, you know, when we get together, there's a lot of conversation from all districts, you know, all over. And I'm just really grateful that we aren't experiencing some of the things that other districts are going through. Uh, it, it's rough and, um, there's just a lot of turmoil. So I really appreciate our district, our, uh, our employee partners, our cabinet, for keeping us running smooth sailing uh, when there's, there's just a lot out there that, that's kinda rough and I feel very badly for those districts. They, they really are, some of them have just had, um, the stories are just awful, so thank you to the amazing AESD and those who keep us running smoothly and, um, it's very much appreciated. Uh, let's see, I did also take part. I wanna thank Anna and Mr. Chavaria's office for reminding me I had a nutritional consultation through the, is that, trusty, through the wellness program? Uh, and you know, these classes are offered to us, um, they're easy to sign up for and they're, uh, the ones that I've taken have been really informative. It was great, you know, it's very expensive if you go to a nutritional counselor through the doctor or whatever and here's all these appointments and I saw employees signed up all over the place. It was about twenty minutes and got some really good information. There's also been cooking classes and so I really appreciate that the district offers that to us, it's, it's just amazing. Um, I joined PTAs, Olive and Orange Grove. Um, I also want to, it was a few days ago, but Dr. Grace, happy birthday and I wish you just a really, um, wonderful, wonderful year, uh, ahead. And the last thing is just, I wanna remind everybody, as we are heading into the holidays and there's lots of activity, lots of excitement, please be careful when you are taking your, um, your child to school and dropping them off or picking them up. There's a lot of traffic, everybody's excited, not always watching, and we need everyone to not only be safe but to be courteous to others and also, you know, um, go to that crosswalk, go to that light. Don't just start running across the streets, 'cause I have seen sometimes kids running, you know, and parents in traffic, so let's just all be mindful of that and do what we can to make sure that our situations during those times are safe and that, um, we go into the holidays with everyone, you know, with no accidents and everyone being safe and well. And I'm hoping to get my booster soon, um, now that I'm not required in Irvine. And hopefully that will be in the next day or so, and then, um, that's it for my report. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Board Clerk Philbeck. Uh, I'll begin my report with, um, on October twenty-eighth, an exciting game between Olive and Jefferson in the soccer fields. Uh, unfortunately, I, I missed pretty much all of it. Uh, I had some, uh, commitments beforehand, but I did make it for the sportsmanship at the end when they were, you know, congratulating one another on a great game that was had, um, which, the silver lining to this was I didn't have to pick a side on, on who I was gonna support, so, um, it worked out uh, well, but I'm looking forward to, uh, future games, to be able to attend there. I did get to say, uh, hi to Mr. Heiner at Olive and, um, a few other folks who happened to be there still on the field. Uh, on October, or sorry, on, uh, November eighth, I attended the Ponderosa. As a member of the Ponderosa PTA, I did attend their meeting. Uh, I took some notes on how to run a very efficient meeting because, uh, it was only about five minutes long. They approved their bylaws and I, I took copious notes on that, so I'm, I'm all ready, since I've only got another meeting to go or so, so, uh, I finally got the hang of it, I think. So, um, on November tenth, I was here also in this very boardroom with Trustee Alvarez as well in our LCAP Advisory Committee meeting. Uh, it was a great turnout, um, I think everybody, uh, it was well facilitated, um, and everybody participated, everybody seemed to be very engaged. A lot of very valuable information. It was just good to be back in person with everybody here. Um, so I wanna thank the staff for putting all that together and allowing our, all of our stakeholders to be able to meet here. Uh, on Saturday, the thirteenth, I also received my vaccine booster, um, at one of our AESD sites at Orange Grove. Uh, as was mentioned in the news and updates, uh, I wanted to thank the staff for spending part of their weekend, um, setting that aside and helping to facilitate that for our community. Um, I saw a pretty steady stream of, of individuals who were coming in, so that was, um, nice to see. Um, there were a couple people, a couple kids who were crying, um, I wasn't one of them, uh, in the, in the vaccine line, so uh, finished my fifteen minutes, I even got a couple pieces of fruit to take home, so it was a win-win. Uh, and then on Monday, I attended the principal coffee chat for, um, for Roosevelt with Mrs. Roman, again, uh, they covered different reading levels, uh, strategies, going over fluency, comprehension, the differences between all these different reading levels, phonemic awareness, phonics. So as a special education teacher and intensive literacy teacher myself, I appreciated that. So, uh, it was a good turnout, it looked like, as a virtual meeting, and then, um, this afternoon, I attended, uh, the Anaheim Elementary Online Academy, um, meeting regarding, uh, Connect First Success uh, brought to us by our, the TOSA there, Kili Hayashi. Um, she did a great job facilitating that meeting, uh, talked about, um, synchronous meetings with the, with the teacher, asynchronous time, what that looks like, how we can partner, uh, with the parents, uh, what our, our roles are. Um, and again, a, a good turnout and a lot of engagement in the meeting, which was important, just of that partnership for helping all of our scholars. So, uh, I just wanted to give her, uh, kudos for that as well. Uh, and that will conclude my report. So, with that, we'll go to item eleven, our future agenda items. Dr. McGallas, any future agenda items? Trustee Relis, Trustee Alvarez, Board Clerk Philbeck?
No, but I'd like to say that was a fantastic board report.
Oh, thank you.
That was really a great board report. You've been out and about quite a bit, so.
I've been practicing, thank you. I finally got one, thank you. Thank you, Board Clerk Philbeck. Um, with that, we will move to, uh, oh, I don't have any agenda items either. Uh, moving to item twelve, our adjournment. Um, if you would indulge me, I would like to, uh, adjourn our meeting, uh, this evening in honor and memory of Jocelyn Saldivar, granddaughter of our, uh, the late Roberto Saldivar Senior, who's a former longtime classified employee retiree of our district and the daughter of Roberto Saldivar Junior, an alum of Anaheim Elementary and principal at Anaheim High School. Um, thank you very much. at Anaheim High School. Thank you very much. With that, I'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting at 8:09 PM. Our next regular board meeting is Wednesday, September, December 15th, so I adjourn this meeting at 8:09 PM. Thank you. Have a good night.